I'd like to call our workshop to order. We're going to discuss, first get an update on legislative affairs and activities that's been going on around the work that Ms. Doyle, Dr. Birdsong, and Dr. Boone have been leading with at Vanna's around our legislative priorities. Just for clarity, we're just going to get an update today. We received a draft of some priorities for us to consider at our October 4th work session. The board will finalize those priorities in anticipation for our breakfast, which we'll get an update on again in a moment. After we have this presentation discussion on legislative affairs, we're going to proceed to have dinner, and over dinner we'll talk about any additional initiatives, priorities, goals that the board wants to put on the table for us to consider as we move forward with our agendas, you know, for the coming, for the coming months. Right now, I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Doyle. She and Dr. Gabriel are co-chairing our Legislative Committee. Obviously, Dr. Gabriel has been out, so Ms. Doyle has been carrying that weight on behalf of the school board. So Ms. Doyle, if you'd like to introduce this item and what we'll do over the next few minutes.
Sure. So what we will do today is I'll introduce Advana Strategies, and I'll do that right now, actually. We have Ron Jordan, who's with Advana Strategies, and Mark Flynn. Jonna Kasaboom is their third partner in crime, who works with us on this legislative priority work, and wasn't able to attend today. But we've been working with both Ron, and Mark, and Jonna in developing our draft legislative agenda for this upcoming General Assembly year. And so we had the opportunity to meet not once, but now twice, and it was last Friday that we met Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Boone, and myself, in order for us to finalize the draft. And so what we want to do today is literally just walk through the draft, have a good understanding of what we have in there now, knowing that as a board that we are going to potentially, you know, edit, alter, add, subtract, knowing that on October 4th, we will review again, we will vote on them on October 4th in advance of our legislative breakfast, which will be on October 11th at the Norfolk Technical Center. So invitations are going out to our folks for them to attend on October 11th, and we're excited about that. So any questions before we get started, before Advana Strategies kind of walks us through the priorities? Okay, good. Mark, would you like to do so?
Sure. And just as an introduction, this year, we've tried to make the priority items, the requests to be more concise, and fewer of them. It's our experience.
It's on.
It's our experience that when you have too many issues, they just get lost. When even your own delegation sees 10 or 15 issues, they just, the attention span just isn't there, and that's just the way it is. And at the municipal league, it did the same thing. We worked very hard to have a very short, concise set of priorities. Surprisingly, this year, the priorities are about money. And so, and I'll, so I actually will just turn it over to Ron for the, for those issues.
The, the first few items there are the specific ask, as Mark said, and the program is divided into a specific ask, which are pretty tightly drawn, and then position statements in opposition or support of a specific issue. First item there is one you had last year. It deals with the VPI, the Virginia Preschool Initiative, and it's to provide additional flexibility to meet the unique needs of at-risk children by increasing the discretionary percentage that the division has for, and criteria by increasing the wait for free lunch in school. You can read the details. Since we've got a limited amount of time, I'm not going to go into the details. You can read them. The second one is the SOQ rebenchmarking every two years. The Department of Education goes back and looks at all the prevailing cost, the average prevail, statewide average prevailing cost for SOQ-funded items for the previous two years, and they use that to update the funding formula. This is the, they do that in the long, during the long session. They're currently in the process of doing that. State Board will look at, will receive those new cost numbers probably later this month. And the statement here asks that the governor and the budget office don't mess with the numbers, as typically does happen, and asking the General Assembly and the governor to fund the SOQ rebenchmarking is approved by the State Board. The next item is probably the most far-reaching, and certainly the, has the longest, the greatest potential for long-term help for education, and that is to asking them to direct JLRK, the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, to review the true cost of public education and the state's responsibility for funding those costs. As all of you know, the SOQ and the items that the General Assembly or the state funds in the SOQ is an artificial representation of the true cost of education. Local government, school divisions provide funding for a whole host of things. The standards of quality, every school division in the state exceeds those standards of quality, which tells you that they're not realistic. So this would ask JLRK to look at the, what is actually occurring, and what the cost of that would be, and what, what the state needs to do to pay that full share.
I want to actually jump in there on that. You know, the, the Virginia Constitution obligates the General Assembly to provide a free, quality education to all children. And however, it goes on to say that the General Assembly gets to define what constitutes a quality education, and they do that with the SOQ's SOL. So this effort, if it works out, will force them to face the inadequacies of those standards that they set, so then it would help maybe to bring them into actual compliance with the Constitution.
The next item deals with CTE. CTE is an issue whose time may finally have arrived. The tremendous amount of new emphasis on CTE at the state level, a lot of interest in the General Assembly. They're hearing more and more from employers who say, "I don't need a kid with a four-year degree. I need a kid who can read, write, and do basic math out of high school. I'll teach him everything else that he needs to know."
I do need to correct you, though. It's not just basic math. It's higher-level math.
Yes, absolutely.
So that they can, the level of literacy and numeracy. So I got to caution you in the language that you use, because we don't want it to be perceived that it's the old way.
True.
Of doing vocational education, where kids couldn't make it.
Thank you.
This is a very sensitive point for me on that.
I've got that.
Is it important?
This is true. So, so part of this is from last year, but one of, one of the things that's addition, an addition where we give an example of a type of incentive where, and it's used extensively in South Carolina for their manufacturing industry, where high school apprenticeships, employers who create high school apprenticeships and hire high school kids in those apprenticeships are actually able to claim a tax credit. It's driven a lot of the resurgence of their manufacturing industry down there. The next one is lottery funds. You had this one also last year, but to, we updated it, the General Assembly last year did restore additional lottery funds, took it back to 35% of the lottery funds that are distributed basis lottery amounts, which are not run through the local, the local composite index. And this asked that it get back to 40%, which the Chairman of the Appropriations Committee has stated a couple of times, that's his goal, which is the amount where it was prior to the recession. I think we all believe that there should be 100%, but getting back to the pre-recession amount is the initial goal here.
So then on the, the rest of it then are the policy issues primarily, although there are money issues sprinkled in for sure. You know, the local autonomy, state mandates, I mean, that's very clear. The non-public school participation in the high school league activities. We'll see that again, probably. You know, the charter schools, charter schools and virtual schools last year, the only thing that kept them from being laws was the vetoes. And so the outcome of the gubernatorial race could have an impact.
The TBO bill, too.
Yeah, the TBO bill, too, yeah. So, so we'll definitely are going to see those again, and we expect to see the student discipline issue again. That, those things failed at the very last part of the session, and so we're going to see that again. And, you know, we, obviously, you all believe, know that the best entity to do student discipline is your school board, your administration, not some, not some group in Richmond. So, so that's on those things. Now, the school.
There's a part of that that we talked about, too, is one of the things that the state does not do enough of is, and we made this argument last year, if you want to curtail the board's authority to do school discipline, to do suspensions, then how about stepping up to the plate and funding alternative programs? Because you don't, because the state is not doing that, and that's part of this.
Moving on, then, with the schools in challenging environments, some of that carries over to the priorities for the, for the funding and issues. And then the, the, there's an LCI statement here, also you see, and there is, of course, an LCI statement as the, in the, in the priorities right there.
Yeah, let me touch on that. Last year, you had the LCI study as a part of the ask, and I know there are other divisions who've been pushing the rock up the hill for a long, for a number of years on this, and have actually introduced legislation and tried to get it passed, and it hadn't gone anywhere. I think the, the feeling in our discussions with Ms. Doyle and Dr. Boone was the, the bigger study looking at the true cost of public education would lift all boats and would give us a lot more support than opening the LCI, which without increasing the size of the pile, all you're doing is redistributing the slices.
The adequate instructional staff, I think you all had had a presentation just very recently, a discussion about this issue, and some of what's in here, Ron, you may want to pick up on this.
Yeah, there's the items about funding teacher pay, the SOQ positions, and the non-SOQ positions, establishing career ladders to improve so that teachers are incentivized to stay in the classroom. You don't have to get a, become an administrator to get, make more money. Facilitating licensure reciprocity, and looking at whether or not it's advisable for certain specialty disciplines to have adjunct, to allow adjunct teachers. And then bolstering the teacher preparation programs like the teacher residency and things like that.
If I could add to that, Ron and Mark are correct. Remembered, our last meeting, we talked about the teacher shortage and how that's become a huge issue, not become, it has been an issue. And so we talked about, yes, this could become a legislative priority, and Dr. Boone outlined some of these bullet points as to the areas that we could look into at the state level. So again, this was generated from our conversation, looking at our own roster.
And just so the board will know, Mr. Billis has been tapped to serve on the state-level committee to look at the reciprocity piece.
Exactly.
So we have a voice at the table with VDOE.
Right.
And then moving on, and the flexibility of staffing requirements, that actually was a request, specific request, a priority last year, just moved it here and retained it. The, and then the, the SOL testing, that is actually, I believe, was, was a, was a policy statement last year. The flexibility in the school calendar, same thing, but how long has that been going on?
Long time.
Long time.
Soon as King's Dominion opened.
Yeah, 40 years that I know of.
Interestingly enough, this year Fairfax got away, had enough snow days, they got a waiver.
Yeah.
So then the gifted students program, that was moved from, from the priorities from last year, but it's still here as a policy provision. The same thing at the last one, the diverse schools, that was in the priorities last year, and it's moved here as a policy statement this year. So that's, that's the first cut at it, and happy to, you know, any changes, modifications, additions, subtractions, whatever.
And if I could just go back to the standards of learning testing, one, Dr. Boone says is far better than I do, but the state has been very proud of itself in reducing the number of tests, and they say that that's been wonderful. However, what they've done is still mandated that the testing take place, it's just not an SOL, which means that the division carries the cost of the assessment.
Yeah.
And so that's one issue, again, we need to raise with our state delegates and representatives that just because it's off of your books doesn't mean it's off of ours.
That's correct.
So again, it's an unfunded mandate that we need to continue to assess the children.
And it doesn't take away the testing burden.
Right.
I was just saying that this morning, we were in an event, and that was represented again, we've reduced the number, but you, you've reduced the number, as you say very well, Ms. Doyle, at the state level, but the local accountability for that.
Right, remains.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Reverend Haywood?
Yes, last year, in the area of student discipline, we were put in the uncomfortable position of supporting this, this bill, which I thought we should with our, but our local legislators were in opposition against us.
Right.
And I'm assuming that that's going to be the same this year as well.
I'd, well, I would, I'd hope that we can.
It's, it's, you're right, it was. A lot of it was, some of it was because it was, there were some school divisions who had been, who had a history of disproportionate exercise of the authority for, there were, they were minority kids were, let me just kind of look, minority kids were being suspended at a rate much higher, okay?
Right.
And Enrico was one of them. That was, that was one that was, been singled out by the state, by the U.S. Department of Education and looking at. That, I think, was the root of some, of a lot of the feeling last year. I think if we do, since we know this is going to be an issue, we get it, get better prepared on the front end when we meet with them, and talk about how this division is dealing with discipline, to show them the rationale why that it should stay with the board and the board's not abusing this discretion, then we can head some of that off. We may not head it off with everybody, but we'll certainly head it off with some, and I can guarantee you with at least one state senator, we'll have a robust discussion.
Yeah.
Well, if I could add.
Just one last follow-up question on that. Is there any other legislative priority here that we are supporting that our local legislators would, would be in opposition against us, that you're aware of?
Well, the funding issues, yeah, because.
I don't think, while, while not in opposition to the funding issues, I think there, we had this discussion in a Legislative Commission, I said on the other day, they're afraid of knowing, because then if you know, you got to act. So there, there may be reticence on the, on the, looking at the full funding of the cost of education.
Yeah.
But opposition, direct opposition to that, I think you'll get hemming and hawing, but I don't think you'll get direct opposition to any of them.
Thank you.
I think what they'll realistically say is that there's not a lot of money on the table for these to be realized.
Right.
But that we still want them to advocate for, by all means. Back to school discipline, I think the other thing we need to help the, the General Assembly understand is that one size doesn't fit all. You know, we do fund alternative education for students that are out of school, so that's the good thing, and that not all in Virginia have been afforded that opportunity.
No, not all do it, right.
So, you know, by the grace of God, Norfolk Public Schools has Madison Alternative and ACES and others that where children who are suspended can continue their education. So we shouldn't just say blanket Virginia, discipline law takes place for all. And that's where I think, you know, we need to be careful.
Yeah, and actually, I was going to, you know, a couple of things reviewing the draft before, I think as a board, we need to talk about that language again. So things have evolved, you know, School Board Association is, is in a task force with other organizations, the state, I think NAACP and others, and so they are working on, on the issue. And I think something that has come up before is how the information gets reported. So to me, it still may be some questions around all that Norfolk Public Schools may report that other divisions may not report. So it may be something we have to discuss in terms of, from the state perspective, what's actually being reported so that we make sure that we're even having conversations that are apples to apples, which I'm not sure right now that, that we are. So that might be something that we may want to consider in that, in that particular bullet as well, if we, if we keep that there.
And there were three bills last year. One dealt with suspension of pre-K through five, and the, the, the education lobbyists and the proponents of the bill, we thought we had a reasonable, we'd come to a reasonable compromise, and one of the, one of the delegates did not, even though the bill went to a conference committee, and they, they actually reported a conference committee report to the floor, the conference committee on the report was, was killed, was rejected on the last day of the session. So there's been discussion, and there was movement back and forth, and the biggest thing was, was the, was the absolute, and that was an absolute prohibition, but everybody was a pretty good, was reasonably okay with what the compromise was. The original bill would have prohibited any suspension of those kids at all, and a lot of superintendents and directors of elementary education said, "You deal with the, what are we going to do with the kids who really, we have no, no way of controlling them," and some of that we get, "and the parents don't show up," that kind of thing. So we, there's, there's movement, there's been a lot of talk, and I think we'll continue some of that going forward. But none of, none of the three bills advanced, the patron of one, Delegate Bell from Stanton, has indicated he intends to bring them back. And, but there has been a lot of discussion, and I give a lot of credit to the proponents. They're very passionate, they're very passionate about what they do, and very earnest, and...
I'd say misinformed.
I mean, I think there's, we cannot deny, as was said earlier, that across the country, we see disparities when it comes to children of color and low-income children, and children with special needs in terms of, you know, discipline and expulsions. We have to figure out, and that's part of the work, that, that we've already started with our own review of the data, and looking at alternative ed to be out, be out in front. So it's, it's a tricky balance between acknowledging what we know we're doing in the division, while at the same time not coming across as somehow we are denying that there is a national issue, but as Ms. Doyle said, doesn't necessarily mean that it's an issue the same for every single division and what they may be trying to do about it.
And one of the questions we asked the proponents, okay, let's, let's take a school division that doesn't, can't afford alternative education, and you limit the ability to suspend, what's going to happen to the kid then? Chances are, that school board's going to be, is going to have to expel, and you really don't want to expel the kid.
I, I think the way that that's been coming across is an all-in-all proposition.
Right.
Either you're in.
Right.
Or, or you're not. And again, when you talk about funding alternative education, you know, we're trying to restore in-school suspension. What are some tools for us that, that we need to put in place? And the state really needs to take the mindset of what are the interventions we need to do proactively to be able to address student needs, and not just have it, you know, with suspension, because suspension in itself isn't effective.
Right.
But at some point, we have to separate the child from where they would normally attend school if the behaviors are such that they are so disruptive that other children can't learn, or, you know, whatever that is. And so, you know, as, as you all work with various entities through this discussion, the idea is not to perceive that suspension should be the only intervention, and taking that away. I mean, there's also been that link between attendance and, you know, children who exceed chronic absenteeism rates, and yet you can look at many of those students' suspensions, fuel some of that chronic absenteeism. And so I don't think they've looked at it holistically enough, you know, it's the idea, okay, we're getting zinged about overrepresentation of who's being suspended and whatever else, so now we won't suspend. And, and I personally don't care for suspending very young children. That, that really challenges me, because I think, again, when, if the child is struggling that much, then what are we doing to support the system, to look into the child's needs and to get them into a different environment, if that's what's warranted? But I also don't think the state should be the one to tell us that we can't suspend, especially when they aren't funding a level of wraparound services to help us intervene more effectively and appropriately with those students.
I like to use a story from a friend of mine. His son had a pocket knife. Told him, "Tommy, don't take the pocket knife to school." Tommy, being hard-headed, took the pocket knife to school. Tommy was suspended for two weeks. Big Tom said, "I told you." But you know what Tommy did? He sat home, watched TV. That was not a productive, that was not a productive suspension. Fortunately, Bull Tommy today is Trooper Tommy. So it all turned out well in the long run, but I use that to illustrate that, you know, out-of-school suspension without anything, it's just a way, it's not productive.
So does anybody else have any other questions before Advana wraps up here on any of the draft elements we have before we have our own discussion?
Spessine?
Is the, I have one, I'm sorry.
Oh, all right. Dr. Robinson and Spessine.
Is the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Good finish.
Is the list too long?
I think this Goldilocks says just right.
Okay.
Remember, the asks are up front, and we have one, two, three, four, five asks.
Yeah.
And then the rest are position policy statements.
Okay.
Last year, there were 17.
Yeah, there were too many.
Okay.
Yeah, that was direction that I gave as a result of the feedback you all had, absolutely.
Ms. Spessine?
So, so last year, we talked about, you know, the, the preschool initiative, but we talked about the need to also have the mixed income, funding for mixed income pre-K. And I think that that's especially important, because we are, what we're basically, I feel like what we're basically doing is to maintain the status quo in keeping at-risk, you know, as it's stated here, at-risk low-income children together without, when we know what the research shows. And I, I guess I have an issue with putting that out there as a, an ask, when we know from a research standpoint that what is best is a mixed income pre-K environment for both those middle and upper-class students as well as low-income students. So I would like to see that language, as we did last year, have that be in here, which also addresses, you know, the diverse, which is a policy statement here, but, you know, of course, it's not just for a pre-K, we want that for pre-K 12. But I think we need to, we really need to hone in on that point, that, that we educate our policymakers, that that's important.
Yeah, I was going to say, in, you know, bounces off Ms. Doyle, but I think process-wise, you know, we have maybe another week.
Right.
Where we can provide feedback back to the committee.
Exactly.
So then, in anticipation for the October 4th work session, they'll have an opportunity to look at any recommendations, so by the time we come back to that work session, we'll have an.
Updated version.
Updated version of the document.
Yes.
To discuss and finalize.
Oh.
So we don't have to finalize that today, but I think it's good for them to hear.
Okay.
What board members are thinking, so they can begin to look at as they pull together that final, well, at least the next draft.
Right.
The other thing I had, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, the other, the two other quick points. So the SOL, the, the calendar, as you said, it's been on there forever, and as we consider taking things off, I think an extended school day, you know, is still something meaningful that we should address. But the calendar piece, I guess I'm having a little bit of an issue with, with asking to have the SOLs be taken earlier, because as it is, some might argue that it is already early. It's mid, it's mid-April, where we're not giving students the benefit of the full year. We're not giving teachers and students the benefit of the full year to offer instruction, and that, that may impact performance in some way. So if it's been on there for, forever, as you said.
Where is it?
And if it's not something that.
I don't see it in there.
We really feel compelled.
We're not commenting on when SOL testing takes place. Dr. Boone, what's your, you have a thought on that?
Yeah, it's not in there.
It's not in.
It just talks about extended school day, extended year-round options.
Are you looking at the SOL testing?
It's the third bullet in terms of.
It was one of the bullets.
The testing window.
That was the third bullet on page four, local control of SOL testing include flexibility.
But I was trying to say.
I think. SOL test administration.
No, that's not about calendar. That's in terms of when a, when, when a class or students are ready, they should be able to take the test.
Oh, okay.
Not held to a certain artificial standard.
Okay.
No.
Gotcha.
But, but, but to your, your point about the calendar, you know, we've, we've been very fortunate that we've dodged a couple of significant weather events in terms of hurricanes. We generally don't get enough snow for the waiver.
Yeah.
But I do recall the year that we had Isabel, and schools were closed, some for a week, some for almost two weeks because of power outages and, and conditions. And so, you know, for me, I, I think it's unfortunate that we have to go the waiver route, we have to find some reason, to put it on some reason, and the burden of proof is on us around that reasoning. I think it should be a case where we, you know, a local school board would have the opportunities to poll its citizens, its, its parents, to see a preference, you know, what's a local, again, it gets to that point of some level of local control, but not just driven by weather data, which, again, for us, we're more likely to have lost instructional days in the fall due to hurricanes versus snow in the winter. We might, we get that every, what, five years that you get maybe three or four days, maybe a week worth total. But to me, if it's truly going to be a grassroots issue, a local issue, then the school district ought to be able to poll its parents to see, you know, as we do with other initiatives when a. other initiatives, when a school district is putting something in place, we, we bring that local voice to that conversation.
Ron?
I agree with you, Dr. Boone, that the, that the school division should have the right to, to alter the calendar based upon their needs, not just because of the weather.
Mm-hmm.
The need, the need is to start school earlier to give kids a head start on instructional time.
Well, yeah.
And, and I don't think there's anything that would preclude us from polling our, our people if they would be open to that.
We can't poll, we can't do anything about it.
Right, but the conditions for a waiver don't include local polling.
Right.
That's the reason I raise it, that, that the local control piece should be indexed against something other than just weather waivers.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And, and to add to, so I guess my thought process was around that, was that we are asking, the reason, the why, why are we asking for that earlier start time, is so that we can fit in the instructional time for that mid-April SOL test. I mean, it is about the SOL test administration. So that's, that's where I tied those two pieces together, just so you knew where my thinking was coming from.
Okay, well, we can talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the only thing, I was, I'll email it, but the, uh, CTE item, I think, is, was written when we were more focused on a regional model.
Mm-hmm.
I think we still need to consider the regional model, but we may want to look at being more MPS-specific as to where we are today, uh, but we can, we can look at that.
If I could add just a little context to that also, when you look at the work that's going on with the Virginia Board of Education in terms of the profile of a high school graduate and how high schools are transformed, that's the language that, that's why I think it's still relevant, and we should certainly incorporate some of that language into it, not just about the regional school piece.
We can, we can figure that out between now and then.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else for Adanas before we move on? Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't you all review, provide comment back to Dr. Gabriel and myself, Dr. Boone and Dr. Birdsong, so that we can collect those all together, and then we can share this back with Adanas, so Adanas can provide another update, and then we can discuss again on October 4th. And then if we need to make further edits, we can, but the idea is we're coming out of October 4th with a vote, so then on October 11th, we have a finalized legislative package to share with our General Assembly colleagues.
Comments back by Close of Business on next Wednesday, whatever that day is, 27th.
Yeah, that would be great.
October 11th is a Wednesday?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think to now put it on our calendar.
Be able to attend.
Okay. So, um, yes, if you got comments back to the four of us, as I mentioned, by Close of Business next Wednesday, then we'll be back in touch with you to provide those to get the update for the following week, and then we'll post them again on Board Docs prior to, so that folks can see them.
Yeah, great.
Good. Anything else before we wrap up here? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Thank you, uh,
Sure.
Adanas team and Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Boone, for your work, and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll move forward. So what we're gonna do now, uh, we're just gonna take a 10-minute break. So at 6:10, we'll be back at the table, uh, with dinner, we're gonna have a working dinner. And just during that working dinner, we'll get an opportunity to kind of go around the table and talk about where we are with some initiatives that, uh, board members would like for us to figure out how to include in, whether it's agenda planning or just getting teed up for, for future discussion. So it's gonna be more, it's gonna be a public meeting, but it'll be a public meeting over, over dinner. So I would ask if the board members can go, is dinner ready?
It's just getting a minute.
Okay, get, get your dinner and come back and be ready to go at 6:10.